Action taken tonight on condition use permit applications will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the planning commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, June 29 to 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will refer to the county commission for a hearing that will take place on Tuesday, July 21 at or after 9:00 a.m. And meetings of the county commission are held in the same room. At this time, the planning commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes from the May 18 meeting are included on the consent agenda. Are there any objections to, from the planning commission members to any item on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, did you want to move?
Yeah, I do. So, thank you for that reminder. I did want to bring up that possibly if you guys would agree unless someone in the audience wants to object, I noticed that the planning staff is recommending deferral of item...
Item seven.
Yes. And there really isn't going to be much of a staff report, so I was wondering if the deferral shouldn't go on the consent agenda as well unless there's someone here. We'll hear shortly if there's someone here that wants to hear about it tonight. Any objections? Okay. All right. So, no objections from the planning commission on the items that were on the original consent agenda, so now I'm going to read each item. First of all, there's the approval of the minutes of the 18 meeting. Second, there's condition use permit 15-38 to exceed 1,200 square feet of total accessory building area, and they're requesting 1,500 square feet, and this is located approximately two and a half miles north of Sioux Falls. Item number three is a condition use permit 15-39 to allow a Class 1 major home occupation, which is flag marker assembly on property that is located approximately 3.5 miles east of Baltic. Again, if you want to move the regular agenda, please raise your hand. Item number four is agricultural tourism permit 15-01 to amend the condition use permit, which was 8-41, on property located approximately two miles west of Garretson. Item number five is a condition use permit 15-41 to allow the transfer of building eligibility, and this is approximately one mile northwest of Valley Springs, located at 26117-486 Street. I didn't see anybody objecting to those staying on the consent agenda. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question maybe of staff for a second.
Yeah.
We just had a request for a CAFO west of Garretson, I think, wasn't it? That Sunbold one?
Mm-hmm.
So, that's not close to this other agricultural tourism thing?
Well, agricultural tourism is a winery, and it's right on the highway.
Okay, so it's not...
The Sunbold one is a little bit further south, and it's on the other side of Highway 115.
I just wouldn't want someone to build within the setback of another project in process.
No, and they're, it's an exist, they already have an existing winery thing there.
Okay. Chair. Chairman?
Yes.
Can we move condition use permit? This is item number three. For changing a condition in there, it should say 5,600 square feet?
Ah, so we're moving that to the regular agenda? The regular agenda, item number three. All right, so on the consent agenda approval of minutes, item number two, item four, and item five, do I have a motion?
It's moved. Second?
Motion and second to approve the consent agenda consisting of item one, two, four, and five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both the same sign, motion carries. So, if you were here for any of those items, your item has been approved, you're free to leave at this time or stick around for the fun. So, now the regular agenda consists of item number three, six, and seven. Do we have a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the regular agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both the same sign, motion carries. So, item number three, you're already up there, so you're ahead of me, so I'm assuming you're the man. What else? What's going on?
David Heidl, Minnehaw County Planning Department. Condition use permit 15-39 is to allow Class 1 major home occupation, flag marker assembly. Property is located about, roughly about four miles east of the intersection of Baltic Highway 115 and Baltic Road there to 250th. As I said, requesting a major home application involves assembly utility flag markers and shipping to clients or customers. Originally, staff discovered that this occupation was being conducted without proper zoning approval. The occupation does not involve any retail sales on the premises. However, there may be on occasion one local customer pick up, pick up their product during the week. Therefore, there will be only limited incidental sale products conducted on the premises. The assembly parts arrive at the site by car, van, delivery truck, or an occasional semi-trailer. Petitioners stay once per week. The last step in the process is delivery of the final product, which is shipped out by UPS truck. Currently, the applicant has five full-time employees, including himself, and four part-time positions. One of the part-time positions includes a summer intern that works for about three months. The occupation is conducted entirely within a 5,600 square foot accessory building, which is why I'm recommending that's moved to the regular agenda because there was an error in one of the conditions that was placed on there, which is situated on a 39.65 parcel. As you can see, it's about 40 acres. The building itself lies right here, and then there's a residence which lies right on the property line, which there was an adjustment, I think there was an expert of that, that was located one foot on that property. There's no eligibility on this one right here. Let's get forward here. This is the site plan that the petitioner submitted. As you can see, the building is there with the setbacks. It's about a little over 200 feet from the right-of-way line, right here on 250th Street, County Highway. And right in there, I can drive the lines back up there. See this next slide here is the site plan created by us. Driveway goes back, and then petitioner has parking laid out right here. So, let's skip forward. The building itself was constructed as 5,600 square feet with some lean-to additions attached to it, as you can see on the left and the right of the image. Moving forward, this is the side of the building, and you can see right there is the office space. Move forward. This is a truck turnaround area for the semis, for the one semi to fully turn around upon receiving the product. And then this is that view of the parking area right there. Forward here. Currently is not on a hard surface area. The parking is on a gravel area. Petitioner stated that he could move, that he could move the parking onto the cement pad there. And again, this is just showing the parking right there. This is the trash and storage area, which is located outside the building, screened from public view from the south of the county highway right-of-way. This is looking south down the driveway from the building and towards, you can see there's some canopera trees there, looking towards the building from about 75 feet back or 75 feet to 100 away from the building. Again, this is a view. This is looking from the base of the driveway from the highway right-of-way. As you can see, you can't, you can't, you can't see the building from the road itself, barely see it there. And then this, we'll just go into some more views of looking at the building from the county highway in different vantage points. You can see as you get further away, the topography hides the building from view. This is about a half mile. This is from the intersection, Eros Road and 250th Street. And moving forward, this is from the west side, from about a half mile away from here. Again, the property is enclosed with trees all around it and around the perimeter. Just going through some things on, as far as staff conducted a site visit in terms of the major home occupation generally meets the standard of the home occupation ordinance section. Petitioner indicated that the occupation has been in operation at this location since 2010. The building was built in 2006 with some lean-to additions added on to it, and the last one, I think, was 2013 was the one that, was a fully enclosed lean-to addition, so it was enclosure. That was the last building for the building. Based on the estimates provided by the applicant, staff calculates that the average number of daily trips, and this includes vehicle trips by people that work there, as well as the deliveries that come to the property, would be about 30 trips generated by the home occupation throughout any given week. This calculation, basically, I already mentioned that. So, the driveway up to the building includes a truck turnaround, as is shown in the picture there, which is just south of the building for the delivery truck driver. Petitioner is currently seeking a location in a local industrial park, but in the meantime, has used the existing building since 2010 to get the business started, add local jobs and crowds so they can be financially profitable. Existing building, 54 by 75 with lean-to additions, was originally constructed in 2006, as I've mentioned. Then the 15 by 65 foot lean-to was imposed in late 2013, about three years into business. Some of the criteria of condition use permits. One is the effect upon the use and enjoyment of the property in the surrounding area for other uses already permitted upon property values within the surrounding area. The area is primarily agricultural land with a few three or four house residential subdivisions over, over a mile away from the site of the home occupation. The home occupation will likely not have a significant impact on property values in the surrounding area since the building is already built, and there are no plans for building expansion at this site. Two, the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. The impact on normal and orderly development of surrounding agricultural property with the use of the subject property as a residence and a major home occupation is likely not to have a significant impact on the day-to-day operations of farm, nearby farms in the vicinity. Major home occupation has been in operation since 2010, and no formal complaints have been filed regarding a particular use of the approximately 40-acre parcel, other than investigated a complaint regarding another agricultural tourism operation as a vegetable garden. They had a sign at the right-of-way at that Baltic corner, investigated that, they had to remove that sign from the right-of-way, and it went further down to see who that belonged to so that they could get an understanding where to send that letter and make that contact and address that issue, and one of the tenant of the property directed me to the property owners, the petitioner, this property, which came to a little discovering and finding out that this building has been used for other than personal storage, and since that last inspection in 2013, which there was nothing that came to my attention about that particular use at that time until this point. Three, that utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. Petitioner has the utilities, access roads, and drainage systems in place due to the building constructed and the use already commenced. No further infrastructure will need to be provided. Four, that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. Petitioner has adequate space adjacent to the existing accessory building for up to 10 automobile parking spaces. The driveway includes a delivery truck turnaround, which is located just south of the building. Five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, lighting inclusive of lighted signs so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. The occupation is assembly-only process, light assembly, and likely not produce vibration, glare, fumes, odors, or electrical interference detectable to the normal senses off the property that would otherwise be present in industrial park-like setting. Petitioner is here to clarify on that issue. Six, health, safety, and general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. Future development plan encourages the majority of commercial industrial development to locate within cities. However, it's recognized that convenience breaks in services as well as some industrial uses could appropriately decide within the rural area. These locations include existing service areas where some reasonable expansion is appropriate and at major highway intersections. While the present major home occupation is described as entailing some light assembly-only processes, this is similar to other permitted occupations involving receiving parts and assembling a product, then distributing them to clients or customers via UPS truck. Recommendation, staff finds that the condition use permit request for a major home occupation flag marker assembly conforms to the goals and policies of the 1998 comprehensive development plan and is not as easily detectable as a commercial operation from surrounding properties. The residence is clearly the primary use of the lot, and the occupation was formed as a startup operation, which remains secondary to the principal use of the lot for residential and agricultural purposes. Staff recommends approval of the condition use permit 15-39 with the following conditions. One, that CP 15-39 shall permit the operation of a Class 1 major home occupation flag marker assembly. Any expansion beyond this will require relocation. Two, that the property shall adhere to the submitted site plan received on 5/26/2015. Three, that the applicant provide at least 100 feet of hard surface driving area as measured from the county highway 114 on backup, like that. Like that here. It's just about 100 feet, which would be enough space to accommodate for the trucks and any amount of gravel that would be put onto the county highway, if any, in conformance with section 15.04 of the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaw County. Four, that the occupation shall be conducted entirely within an accessory building and clearly incumbent to the use of the structure for residential purposes. Five, that the occupation shall be operated by a member of the family residing in the dwelling. Six, that employees of the occupation shall be limited to residents of the dwelling up to seven non-resident employees and up to exceed eight employees on the site. And then seven, which is a change that up to 5,600 square feet of accessory building space may be used as storage for the occupation, so strike "cold" storage, which is put, storage for the occupation. Eight, that the occupation shall not create vibration, glare, fumes, odor, electrical interference, or other noise that may pose a nuisance or be detectable to the normal senses off the property. Nine, that no outside storage, display of goods or merchandise, or external evidence of the occupation shall occur on the property. Ten, that a non-illuminated nameplate now exceeding two square feet in the area may be placed on the dwelling or accessory building, and one non-illuminated sign now exceeding four square feet in the area may be located on the driveway for the occupation. Eleven, that no off-premise signs shall be used. Twelve, that the occupation shall not generate, shall not generate more than 10 visits per day from clients or customers averaged over a period of seven consecutive days. Thirteen, that there shall only be limited incidental sales of products conducted on the premises. Fourteen, that the number of deliveries generated by the occupation shall not significantly affect the character of the area. Delivery vehicles shall be limited to auto pickup or typical delivery service truck. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Petitioner is in the audience.
Questions for David? Thank you, David. And I should have stated for those of you in the audience that our procedure is we will have a staff report on these regular agenda items, and then we'll give an opportunity for the petitioner to come forward, state the name and address, give a brief statement, answer questions, and then we'll open it up to the floor for anyone else that would like to comment on the item. Again, if you come to the podium, please state your name and address before speaking. So, is the petitioner here for this item?
Yes, sir. Paul Corrett, 477-42250 Street, Garretson, South Dakota. David did a great job telling everything pretty well about it. I was pretty well unaware of the need for the permit, to be honest with you. My recommend, my one-off, my maybe recommendation for future entrepreneurs like myself would be, if there's any way to let the, to help the zoning, I should say, the rural economic, the economic development guys, let them know that these guys, that if you're starting up a business out in the country, that you need a permit would be helpful to us. But anyway, I have no other comments. I'll let David indicate it.
I want a very simple question. What is a flag marker assembly?
It's an invention he came up with in 2008. It's a flag insertion device. All these locating flags that you see that are marking underground utilities that you see, we make the flags, assemble the flags there, as well as make the device called the flag shooter, which is a paint tool and an automatic flag insertion tool at the same time.
Cool. Good for you. Now, I don't feel dumb because I'm not the only one.
No, I was, I'm so glad you asked. And actually, the city of Sioux Falls is in Midtown, and they're two of our best clients.
Cool. Thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner?
Why did you select this area to pursue your business?
This is where I was living at at the time. Yep. And still.
Or is there any livestock facilities around here?
There is none, sir. No.
Thank you, Paul. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Okay. What's your wishes?
This is interesting. It really pushes the limit of what we call a large home occupation. It just pushes it right to the limits. Having said that, I see he does, very appropriately, he put in there that it has to be, this is it, basically what you're saying, right? With the conditions that you put on there. The pavement, it's not very, not very visible, but I think we've had some home occupation, it probably had more turnover, more traffic generated than this.
I can sense that. Move to approve with the amendment that David suggested, item seven to 5,600 square feet, and strike the word "cold." Okay. Second? Motion and second to approve with those amendments and all of the earlier stipulations. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both the same sign, and that motion carries. Thank you. Item number four then is agricultural tourism permit 15-01. Kevin, you're...
That was on the consent agenda.
Oh, it is. That kind of, yeah, just going numerical order. Messed me up. Thank you. Item... There you go, yeah. Item seven, isn't it?
Six.
Six. Yeah. Item six, a condition use permit 15-35 to amend condition use permit on accessory building area, and this is David again.
Yes, Commissioner, this is David, Minnehaw County Planning Department. Okay. Condition use permit 15-35 is to amend condition use permit 11-05 to exceed accessory building area. Original condition use permit is for a storage building, for internet car parts and trucks or trailer sales. 11-36 was that size that allowed 1,800 square feet for the total storage area. Petitioner is requesting an additional 720 square feet, as you can see below, the size of that, for the home occupation storage, which, as I mentioned, consists of car parts and trailers, as well as a bathroom for customers to visit the site occasionally rather than having to visit the residence on the site. This one, on June 20, staff met with petitioner, just go through some images here. This property, just going through some of the things, I pulled up the accessory building square footage in the immediate area, and just to the south, it's a horse stable, it's 40 acres, and then move further out away from the property, you start getting into properties that have 2,000, 2,000 square feet of accessory building area, some subdivision up here, which is about a mile away from this property, and then down here at the corner, as well as along this property. So, it's right around, generally comparable with the petitioner's requested size, which has a detached garage on the property, which is about 30 to 40. So, it's a little bit smaller than that. Right now, there's a 30 by 60, a 20 by 30, and 10 by 12 shed already on the subject property. 30 by 60 accessory building is the only building in addition to the dwelling permitted for the home occupation storage, so this is what's currently in the conditions. So, the total, they would bring the total of 3,240 square feet with all of that included. And during the inspection, staff found that, staff found that the entire occupation is conducted within the existing 30 by 60 accessory buildings. There's no appearance of the occupation other than the miscellaneous car parts that are lying on the west side of the building edge, which I informed petitioner that needed to be addressed as a part, as a part of this condition use permit process. Petitioner can clarify on that, which are hidden from view property, as you can see on the site plan here. The parts that I was indicating were right along this west edge of the building, and the road is right here, so you can't see them from the road. You have to go along the property to see them. Petitioner's plan, the requested addition is on the north side of the building. There's no road to the south because there's a road right away that runs through there, easement that runs back to the farmstead right over here that belongs to this property owner, the horse stable there. Other than that, the materials on the east side have been moved to a location within the existing building, which is not yet addressed because of my co-enforcement that I told him that those need to be inside the building because it's part of the conditions of approval. And just going through, just some of the things, the pictures that I took during the process. This is the east side, northeast, southeast side of the building, looking towards the petitioner's detached garage there, which is not used for the home occupation. This is the driveway, the road easement that runs through there to that farmstead back there. This is where the petitioner plans to have that addition onto the 30 by 60 or 1,800 square foot building. This is the east side. See the vehicles have been removed from that property. This is the gravel road right there that runs north-south in access to the property. In addition, here is, here's a view of that building. This is a building that's on an entirely separate property, which is owned by a different property owner than the petitioner. The building will be located right back here behind the trees. So, this is just some of the other buildings I took pictures of. This is roughly the same thing as two buildings that are located on approximately 10-acre parcel, 10 acres, two buildings side by side, similar to petitioner's requesting. Go through some of the condition use permit criteria. One, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the surrounding area for other uses already permitted upon property values within the surrounding area. The area is primarily agricultural land with a few residential acreages located within one-half mile of the subject property. Proposed addition will likely not have a significant impact on property values in the surrounding area. Two, the effect upon the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. The impact on normal and orderly development of surrounding vacant property with the proposed 720 square foot addition to the existing 1,800 square foot accessory building being used for the home occupation is likely to be minimal. Although the requested building size is not projected to exceed the maximum allowable percentage for accessory building square footage in the rear yard, or 30% of the rear yard, the amount of total accessory building area exceeds that of the residence. Nearly all the properties in the surrounding area have accessory buildings, is beyond that mile mark, varying sizes from 1,200 square feet to 4,000 square feet. Three, that utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. Petitioner has utilities, access roads, and drainage systems in place due to the building constructed and the use already commenced, so no further infrastructure will need to be provided. Four, that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. Petitioner has adequate space adjacent to the existing accessory building or the location in front of the detached garage, as was indicated on the previous site plan, for up to two automobile parking spaces as a result of residential activities. There is adequate space for delivery truck turnaround, existing driveway for UPS trucks. Five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, lighting inclusive of lighted signs so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. The occupation will likely not produce vibration, glare, fumes, odor, or electrical interference detectable to the normal senses off the property that would otherwise be present in industrial park-like setting. Six, health, safety, and general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. Due to the residential nature of the home occupation use or the internet sales of car parts and trailer, and trailers for the building use as storage for those use, those items prior to shipping them via UPS for the building use as storage for those use, those items prior to shipping them via UPS truck to customers or clients, there should be a minimal impact on surrounding residential properties as well as agricultural properties. Therefore, as expected, the health, safety, general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan will likely not be affected in a significant manner. Recommendation, staff finds that the proposed seven hundred and twenty square foot additional accessory building storage area for the home occupation, internet sales of car parts and trailers is an appropriate accessory use and clearly incidental to the use of the lot as a residence. Conditions five, seven, and fourteen were revised to reflect the, the existing conditional use permit. Staff recommends approval. I'll just read through the conditions that were amended in five, seven, and fourteen for those in the audience. So five, that in addition to the dwelling up to two thousand five hundred and twenty square feet, thirty by eighty-four accessory building space shall be used as, as cold storage for the occupation. Seven, that no outside storage of car parts and trailers, display of goods or merchandise, or external evidence of the occupation shall occur on the property. And in fourteen, that the applicant, that the applicant shall maintain a South Dakota sales tax license and dealer's license, which was revised to indicate more current reflection of the conditional use permit in the review of it. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
David, I guess I have one. And the conditional use permit criteria, item number five. This, this land is zoned ag, is it not?
Yes.
So when we say that it's not going to have, constitute a nuisance, and then we say that it would not produce vibration, glare, fumes, odor, electrical interference detectable of normal senses off the property that would otherwise be present. And I think the criteria ought to be in an agricultural area rather than an industrial park-like setting. Because in an industrial park-like setting, it's not, it's not zoned for that. So that, you know, I think, so my question to you, and my guess, I think I know the answer is, is it's not going to be detectable different than what you find in an ag setting, is it? They're not doing any fumes or vibration or noise.
Yeah, it won't be different than anything other than taking out car parts and storing them or storing trailers. Not making any noise from them.
Sure. So, you know, I think it passes the sniff test there, but I, again, I, I think the criteria ought to always be that it fits the overlaying zoning rather than the requested activity.
Mr. Chair. So I think you're, you're right there, but I think our freedom to farm covenant covers those things as well. I mean, you decide to build a house in a rural area and you're subject to vibration, fumes, noise.
Get all that. So, so the criteria though, but let's say you, you put in a furniture finishing business and you have a strong lacquer ore emitted. That would not be what you normally find in an agricultural setting. So it would be something you'd find in an industrial park. So you could say it would be found in an industrial park and therefore it passes? I would say, no, it doesn't pass because you don't find it in an ag setting. That's, that's the difference. That's, that's the, the here I'm trying to split there. And I was doing it more from a learning perspective, to make sure I was on the right page and calibrated with the staff. That's what I brought in.
Well, we would get to decide anyway.
Oh. All right. Thank you for putting that with me. It's a good point though. It really is. Anything else for David? Thank you, sir. Is the petitioner here? Please come forward, state your name and address, and tell us about your project. You might want to pull the microphone down. Yeah, pull the microphone down and speak up, please.
Due to the storm, I have been, was not able to attend.
Okay. Do you have any customers that visit? So if this bathroom is becoming an issue or...
It's an issue on the lease of license, so it's one of the factors we would like to meet.
Oh, on the dealer's license, you have to have it. Okay.
Just a couple.
Mr. Chair. How long have you been doing this? Quite a while, or...
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure. A few years. Since we, since we moved there, we petitioned to, to do this, we had done that at our previous residence.
Looks like two thousand eleven.
When the original conditional use permit.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak to this item? It's up to us. It is Mr. Bart, so we'll go ahead and put it, we get to decide.
Mr. Chair, I don't see any reason not to let them go forward with this, so I make a motion to approve.
And a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion second to approve the stipulations. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign and motion carries, and your use permit is approved. Item number seven, is conditional use permit fifteen dash thirty-seven to allow for class C beef cattle. Okay. Using himself. This is approximately two and a half miles southwest of Hartford. And Kevin, you get the honors this time.
As noted, this petition is to allow class C beef cattle. It is for seven, the petitioner requested seven hundred and forty-nine animal units. And being that it's beef, that would be seven hundred and forty-nine animals. The site is located approximately one mile to the east of the existing facility that the operator owns. Holmes Place right here. And this is two and a half miles southwest of Hartford. He, the petitioner has noted that he intends on moving his existing facility and expanding it to a new location. And so it can be presumed that this would be closed down with the move. The, as noted in the staff report, the petition was received with very little information. And noted several things that needed to be required, including site plan and so on, and that sort of thing. Since this, the petition was received, as you can see here with the setbacks, the petitioner has moved the, the site plan to be located outside of the set, required setbacks here right here, which is located on this current site plan that was received over the weekend or just before the weekend. Other than that, staff did receive this as the, the plan at the same time for odor and rendering services and pest control. But at this time, we do not feel the application is complete enough to allow for approval of this. So we are asking for deferral and for further completion of the, of the application.
Questions for Kevin?
Mr. Chair. So Kevin, the nutrient management plan was enclosed?
I did receive... This is the nutrient management plan. And I, I am a little confused. I haven't looked over, I looked over more in depth after I received it. And I do see that it's listed as Kyle Elbers' nutrient management plan. I did request at the time to bring Kyle's, since he's doing a CAFO as well, to bring his nutrient management plan to the office because I forgot to make copies. So this may be his, and I guess the petitioner can clarify whether this is to combined or if this is just Kyle's or how does this nutrient management plan work. Kyle did give us a nutrient management plan, this is the other one. And this is kind of an update, and that's what I confusion about that.
So there's going to be no milking going on? This is just growing heifers or something?
Yes, this would just be beef cattle.
Beef cattle, okay.
Yep.
Any other questions for Kevin?
Well, if I may.
Yeah.
So this, this diagram also appears pretty imprecise. It may be effective. I'm not sure I can translate all the scratches I see on there. Does, does this narrow down on the property where these buildings are? Can you tell looking at it?
This does have, it narrows it down to fifty feet from the property line on this west side. And since there is no marking here, I presume that he's going to be at the setback, which would be fifty feet from the road. He does have driveway locations. And he shows, if you look at the imagery, we'll see that these roughly coincide with drainage ways on that property as it all drains into the creek.
So how far from the building to the creek?
I noted that in the staff report. I believe it was seven hundred feet, approximately seven hundred feet away from the intermittent stream. It is closer to this intermittent stream. And there is this one arrow right here that does point to the neighboring property. The general slope is towards the stream, and there is this one that kind of, but there's an intermittent stream just off the side, let me see if the map shows it. Right here, where my dot is at, that kind of parallels the property line.
So is the sketch oriented north-south, just like this photo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
And you can see in the sketch, there is trees here too.
So do you know, is this barn, is it slatted with a pit or is it bedding pack? Bedding pack? Okay.
Yeah, I might get the, the petitioner that. It says stack slab right here in the newer, in our newer storage, so.
But we're asking to have this continued to next month because we need some additional information submitted by the applicant.
Well, we should certainly hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Kevin. Is the applicant here? If you can come forward, tell us a little bit about your project and if you've got any concerns about a referral.
Kyle Elbers, two six one nine three, four hundred and sixty eighth Avenue, represent Brian Elbers. We stated that that is a comprehensive nutrient management plan. I know when we're dealing with the dairy, that was one thing you guys were worried about. That takes into consideration the dairy and the cattle facility because we do operate on the same acres. So that is a comprehensive nutrient management plan. They said they didn't want very detailed, you know, that's the grade plan. It flows, the water goes downhill to the creek. It's an agricultural zoned area. In regards to the trees, I guess that's one thing we want to request, that we can plant those at our discretion instead of Montney County Conservation District's all their plants. I went through and worked the South Dakota odor footprint tool, and there's one house laying within the ninety-nine percent odor annoyance free frequency area. And they're well outside the ninety-eight percent. So at the end of the day, trees are not going to affect the neighbors on odor control. That's, that's already, we're already meeting all the requirements of the South Dakota odor tool footprint. So that's just one thing we want to request, that we do that at a discretion. As far as pushing out another month, it's going in that corner of the property. And we've brought in everything he asked for, so. I guess it, I'm not sure what else he wants exactly, so.
So you, have any discussions with staff as to what they want?
Yeah, I mean, we brought, I talked with them last Wednesday, and we brought some more stuff in Thursday morning.
Are there remaining questions as to what you need to provide, or you say you're not sure? So let's make sure if they...
Well, I would say we brought in everything that they requested on Wednesday.
Previously, or you brought it in on Wednesday?
We brought it in Thursday morning.
Okay.
Is this a family operation? Are you representing somebody there?
This is a, a family operation. This is my dad's CAFO on his property. And I'm representing it because I've been talking with Mary Lou Lacy. And that's, I guess I need to clarify that. This is an RCPP program, equipped program, that in the last two months since I started my dairy application, we've been added into the Skunk Creek Water Protection District. And this project is based on us closing down our current facility, which the neighbors were so worried about runoff, closing down the current facility and putting them under roof in a confinement with nutrient management plans and the government making sure everything's right. And this is a RCP funded program. Now, this is all about cleaning up what's the neighbors who we're worried about, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I just speak for a second?
Please.
You know, what, what I think we need to note here is that all of this information is to be prepared and submitted at the time of application, not three days before the meeting. As you well know, all these staff reports go out a week before the meeting. So it gives you time to review this. And as you heard Mr. Elbers say, they brought the last information into Kevin on Thursday. The, the staff reports that you got were mailed out the Friday before or the Thursday, a week earlier than... So while he may, and I, and I haven't met with the three of them, I mean, with Kevin and the applicant. And I know Kevin's been working with the applicant, helping them get all the information along. It's just not fair to staff unless we have all that information at the time of the application submittal. And the plan, the county commission has been rather clear in their direction to staff that they want all this information should be provided at the time the application is made. And so, you know, we need to be able to have time to fully review it, meet with the applicant. But we still need a lot of time to review it, make sure it's all, everything, all the Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted, and we can write you a report and get it in the mail to you.
And we were informed Wednesday that they needed more information. And he was, he informed me that they would be sending out Thursday afternoon.
I got one question for you. Now, there will not, all animals will be undercover. There will not be any open lots.
There's no open lots. This is a monoslope facility.
Bed pack inside?
Yep, all, monoslope, bed pack, all undercover.
Okay. How often do you think you would clean in that?
Well, the plan is for every, twice a year, cleaning. And then the feed out will be scraped and held on the stack slab.
Mr. Chair. So where is the existing operation relative to the buildings that you're planning?
It's a half monoshore.
Oh, okay.
In the next section over.
Any additional questions for Mr. Elbers? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak to this item? If so, please come forward, state your name and address. Yes, please.
Burne, D, two seven nine five, four hundred, two seven nine five, two, four hundred and seventy-seventh Avenue, Canton, South Dakota. I also land right up by Mr. Elbers. And I was just wondering, your order control that you talked about, how far setback was it?
The Neers House.
I know where the Neers House is, but what was the setback for the orbit control?
The Neers House lies within just over, just under a half mile, and they barely sit within the ninety-nine percent odor free frequency. And your property is a half, over a half mile north, three quarters mile north.
Very true. I farmed for eleven years, so I know what he's, you know, I feel that agriculture a part of it. I live in an acreage. I own the land up there. I understand all that. I just want to know, you know, if he's getting an existing, he's moving his feedlot from an existing place to the current place you want to build, correct?
Correct.
So with all that, if this is granted, if it's seven hundred and forty-nine... So with all that, if this is granted, if it's seven hundred and forty-nine head, if he wants to expand in the future, what's the next step?
He'll need to come back.
And what's the next number?
In excess of what he's approved for. Anything in excess of what he's approved.
So anything can be, I could, you could go from seven to fourteen hundred to two thousand.
Of course, the requirements do change.
Okay, but that's what I wanted to find out.
Sure. A person can apply for virtually anything. They don't always get approved.
True. True, so, and it's going in the southwest corner of that quarter, right? Okay. I just wanted to have some questions answered. That's all I wanted to do.
You should try to direct him to us, and then we'll let him, give him a chance to. So just state your questions, then we'll give him a chance to come forward, so it can get recorded on the record that way, as opposed to responding from the back of the room.
Okay. I think that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know Mr. Barth asked, this is the, I think this is the location of the existing feedlot, and then this is where they want to move it to.
It'll actually just be to the.
Put onto the words CAFO.
Yep, it'll be right at this F and O, the CAFO.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this item?
Carol Kapperman, four five nine nine four, two hundred and sixty-third Street. We have the land that's right next to it, and I just got concerns because there's a little acreage there, and we've had different times people wanting to buy it, and we turned it down, because we've always thought about building right there. So that would take me away from building my retirement home there, because I'm not going to build next to a cattle yard, which everybody wouldn't want either. And I'm also concerned, he was talking about the runoff, with some of it would come into our land, and I'm concerned about that, because, you know, it'd be right up next to our land. And he was talking about putting trees in the way he wants. I would want the Minnehaha County people to decide the trees, because I would, if it's going to be built, I would want the correct amount of trees and everything put in there. That'd be really important. So I guess that's my question is, I guess that would take away from me. I guess, you know, he put in first before me, but that would take away from me building mine, because there was an existing place there. It's just, we've always run our cattle on there, and I've always said it'd be a beautiful spot for me to put my retirement home. And that would take away from that.
So we're, just so you know, we're looking at a screen that's right below you on the podium. It equals what you have above you. So maybe Scott can, or yeah, you've got it. Can you tell me where?
It's right, right there.
Right there.
I mean, right.
Underneath the ceiling.
Yeah.
Over the sea of, to the west.
All right, this is just the entire parcel, and it would be right here.
And there's an existing, so is there?
There's a barn on there yet, and a couple grain bins and stuff.
Is there building eligibility available?
They have like four or five.
Yeah.
I see.
But see, that would take away from us putting, because it's a spot that I put my house in.
And you have an eligibility.
But I've been trying to get my husband to do it, and.
Those husbands.
Yeah. But I just, you know, and then I'm very concerned about the runoff onto our property. You know, so that's my concerns.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak to this item?
Lauren Gady, four six one three four, two hundred and sixty-third Street. And I have the property across the road to the south of this property. And I spent an excess of eighty thousand dollars putting tile through there. And it's kind of pretty to run right next to the fence line where they're going to pull to put that cattle unit, which drains into that creek where you're trying to keep the manure out of. So I don't know. If you find bacteria in there, and you're going to shut, maybe shut the tile down or something, you're affecting me across the road. I think I should have some consideration on that, too. I'm kind of wondering why you don't let them build that up there where the dairy's at? Why are we going to contaminate two different parcels of ground? I mean, they're going to put a waste management system up there where the dairy is. Why don't you just let them put their beef animals up there, too?
We respond to requests, so we don't direct where.
No, I think that's what should be done. Why, I think it'd be a lot more cost-effective. And maybe they should build that beef unit first before they build the dairy, if you want them to catalog that creek. And I'm kind of hearing a rumor is Minnehaha County kind of going to build this monoslope barn for them, or pay for some of it?
At the county. You guys know many.
Who is? NRCS is going. Well, I'd like to build one, too. I guess I, I got cattle across the road. I suppose my runoff runs in the creek, too. So I guess I'll have to talk to them. But that's kind of my concern. I just kind of think that whole operation should be at one spot, and maybe I'll have to talk to the elders on that. I guess I'm not really opposed to what they're doing. I mean, they're trying to make a living just like the rest of us. I don't want to walk with too many feathers. I got to live next to them, so. I guess, any other questions? I was undone.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Doug B., I live immediately north of where they're planning on building their, I don't live there. I, we own, my mother owns the property, and immediately north of where they're going to put in the cattle for the dairy operation. I guess the only question I got, if this is the NRCS, don't you have to have all kinds of stuff for holding ponds and stuff?
Yep.
That's the bed pack facility.
Don't you have to have all that stuff ahead of time, before you get all that stuff done? I mean, I don't care if you do it, but I've talked to people that have had.
Mr. Chairman, we need you to answer.
I've had, I've talked to people that have put in cattle feeding operations, and they have to have all kinds of stuff for the NRCS, and they don't let you do anything until they're satisfied, so I don't know.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dennis Kapperman, four five nine nine four, two sixty-third Street, Hartford. Property owner adjacent to the west side of the proposed site. I guess you probably all recognize my face and the Elbers' face, and we're back. As you can see, if we bring it up there, we're getting boxed in both sides. We're getting the dairy on the west side, which we conceded, too. And it's a good idea to put it up north of the place and get it out of the creek bottom. Conceded to that. It's a good idea to get the beef cattle out of the creek bottom. But my question is, why so tight right in the corner next to my property? Are we dealing with a little bit of resentment here? Because I was invited to this meeting so we could all hear everybody's opinion and keep the community happy, because I didn't go, you know, say, yeah, go for it. I love you, you know, we're, we'll get along. And I put my two cents worth in, as I don't want their contamination running on my ground. I like to keep it a farm environment. We've had ample opportunities to sell acreages off that. We all claim we're rural farm people and love our land and love our environment. And yet, you know, it wasn't I that have sold acreages or properties off to individuals at the site of a few dollars. And my other question is, why so tight in the corner? Why so tight, so tight, fifty feet? I can spit fifty feet. But why fifty feet off the road, fifty feet next to the property line, when we have the blowing snow? Do they not understand that obstructions cause problems in the roadway? I mean, why is it just, all of a sudden, it's just like, we can't give up any valuable farmland, but we have to do something, and they should. They need to put them cattle somewhere out of that creek, because it's contaminating it. For years, it's been pushed into the creek. And it's good that they're putting it somewhere. But I continue to look at this map, this fine drawing. They're very well educated on how to present this, and yet this is all, we always go through this, a little feed sack drawing with some scribbles on it, saying, this is all I want to give up. But I'm going to put it right next to the road, so when the neighbors come by, they can count the cattle. If they come by with the windows open, the flies can come in and haul them away for us. Why so close? Why, why right dead fifty feet by fifty feet? I don't know. There isn't much equipment anymore that can get through a fifty-foot pass. Fifty foot off the roadway, getting awful tight. I would be a little concerned about obstructions in the road at certain times of the year. And also, traveling in and out of that facility, is all the feed, all the management going to be done at that facility? Or are they going to travel back and forth that half mile between the existing building site? And what are they going to bring along with it as they come? Yeah, I'm concerned about runoff, you know? It's easy for me to just concede and say, you know, the neighbors can do whatever the neighbors want, but you invited me here to the meeting to hear my side of the story. I'm, I just can't understand how people can just throw their wants and needs on somebody else's wishes and dreams, and just, you know, squash them as they so fit. And then still, just fifty feet from the road, fifty feet from the fence line. I know that's my half of the fence. I know I'll be fixing fence on a regular basis just because of the snow and everything else that's going to accumulate from it being so close to those fence lines. So my suggestion is, you know, they got to do a little better job of presenting what they're wanting. Make sure, whatever you do, let's not go through the fiasco that we went through with the dairy. I don't see how planning and zoning can pass a proposed site like this without having the facts and everything they need in writing ahead of time. Regardless of whether they can afford it or not, it has to be in black and white. I assume that's what your job is, is to make sure things are put in place so that when you pursue with this building site, that everything, your bases are covered, that the people that have been contacted, that need to be contacted, and try to come up with a little better plan than fifty, but feed in this way and fifty feet in that way, and go from there. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Elbers, would you like to come back up and succinctly respond to some questions?
Kyle Elbers, was getting two six one nine three, four hundred and sixty-eighth Avenue. Starting with runoff, there's going to be a very small amount of clear water going off the one side of the facility. Everything else is sloped the other way. In regards to the tile, we have permitted them to dump the water onto our property at the fence line. So I guess, you know, we gave them permission to do that, so as far as it, and we're not going to do anything to hinder it from flowing to the creek. I guess in regards to the NRCS's program, yes, we have to have all the plans and stuff for the building once we get to that stage, but they're not going to set aside funding for a project that doesn't even have a conditional use permit, because if I can't, if I can't move forward with this project at this stage, they're not going to take funding away from another project, because they want, you know, they got a long-term plan to clean up Skunk Creek. I guess, as far as why we're building it in this area, it's all about delay of the land, you know? That, there is a plateau on that hill. We have to do some dirt work off the east side. That's why it's going there. It's, I believe legally has to be seven feet off. It's fifty feet off to give us room in that corner. We move any farther to the east, it's just that much more dirt work, because the dirt, it goes over. Moving it to the, putting with the dairy facility up north, that length of building, once again, doesn't fit with the lay of the land. And moving it over to the north side of the hill is, well, that's why I have another meeting with the commission tomorrow morning, because there's this fear that I'm going to move a facility over the north side of the hill and intend a parking lot effect across the neighbor's property. So building up there is, well, he doesn't want that either, so we got to build it somewhere, so.
Kyle, is the plan then to, once this is in operation, to close down the other facility?
Yeah, that's the only way we're funded, is to close down the existing CAFO, my father's facility.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to close the floor. I have a question for Kevin. Yes. Kevin, on the setbacks, how much latitude is there on this, in this area to place this? So there's room to the east, but not much to the north?
Yeah. The, yeah, the next nearest house is here, and it's not reaching the property, so the parcel.
Thank you. So, sorry, I closed the floor.
Oh, I just wanted to speak for that question.
So I have to say that I'm very concerned about taking any action without having the benefit of action of approval or denial, I should say, other than deferral, without having the benefit of staff doing their normal good job and providing recommendations to us. And I think that the interim time provides, I tell you what, some of the most contentious hearings we ever had are CAFO. And one of the best ways to see them succeed is when there's neighbors that come together and have an honest and open discussion, and usually the person who's got to make that happen is the applicant. And I'm hoping that if there is a deferral, that maybe there can be an open discussion with those people in the area that have, you know, some valid concerns. And possibly we'd have kind of a harmonious meeting next time. That would be my hope, and so while I'm not making a motion as the chair, I guess I'd be advocating for that. And when we get information next time, we should defer it. Understanding a little bit more about contours. A plan with contour lines would help me understand whether there's a lot more fill that really needs to be done, if you cite this a little bit more appropriately and in consideration some of the neighborhood concerns. So I'd like to know a lot more about, that's my thoughts. Mr. Chair, I agree with you, and I'll make a motion to defer action for a month. And I guess I would have some comments if I get a second. Got a motion to defer, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Additional comments? I just would say that this is by far not the most contentious hearing. People are being perfectly reasonable here, and it's good to listen to each other. It's good to talk about these things. There might be ways that if people put their heads together, that solutions to some of the concerns can be alleviated, and everyone can wind up being a little bit happier than today, maybe. And I just, that I guess, another speak. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'm concerned, too, that we don't have any recommendation from staff. I mean, we got our information before, and I'm hoping that the neighbors and the applicant come together and try to make this work. You know, this isn't the most contentious one that we've had, very well we had last month, but it goes with territory, you know? Without any recommendations here from our staff, I'm a little concerned with me sitting here approving something.
Any other comments?
That's my biggest concern without, you know, the defer is, we don't have enough information. So I can fully understand where you guys are coming from, without everything right with staff. I feel like you did defer it for a month.
Tim Durk? I'm going to call a question, and all those in favor, say aye. Go, same sign. I have a motion to defer it. Here it is. Very, talk to each other. Thank you all for your time. So I don't make the same mistake, you know, do we have a, a, a motion? Yes, well, thank you. Question for Scott. Scott, regarding, I met Tucker Andrew the other day. You said something, that a letter had been sent to the Wall Lake Winery?
Kevin's been working with them, yeah.
What's the status of that, since nothing has been done?
I guess I'll speak from here. The Wall Lake Winery, I believe the next kind of date that I sent them in kind of little increments is coming up real soon. I haven't looked at it. I haven't looked at it today, um, but I know it, it was sometime in the middle of June here, so I'm guessing it's, it's right up here before I look at it and send the final letter for, uh, for compliance and then it'll come up for review.
I was just curious. I hadn't seen anything done at all on the new levels of compliant ground. And of course, it's kind of different. Like the one we approved tonight, have they actually have grapes?
Yeah, they do.
You know, this one has nothing, nothing's been planted in, so, and that was one of the main points they had to have. Whose side is the sign off the road?
Yeah. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Go with your heat. Thank you.